Supervisor's Pen Township, Thursday, December the 26th, 2013, will now come to order. We will stand for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to add that the minutes of the meeting are recorded, date in preparation of those minutes, and at this time, I'd like to take a couple seconds and introduce our new Secretary Treasurer, Elizabeth Goodheart.
Goodheart, yes.
And she says you can call her Libby if you like.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Libby, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
First thing on the agenda is, I'd like to report that there was no executive sessions held within the last month, and at this time, we have the recognition of visitors. We have Robin on there, the first one.
Hi. It doesn't seem like it's been a year since we've done this, does it? Just last year was really planned. I think you had a copy of the proposal in front of you. Page number two starts sort of going over all the coverages and limits and deductibles. For the most part, the coverage limits, the deductibles are all the same as last year, except for the property. Each year, that's increased by about a 3% inflation factor. There is a property schedule on the back, we can go over that, but that's just, the first few pages are just the overall of the coverage and limits and everything, but, like I said, basically, the coverage and deductibles are all the same as they were last year. Page number four is the bids that I got, and again, this year, the MRN Trust has given us the best quote by far. You see that the total for everything, the entire package, including the property, the crime, the autos, the law enforcement, public officials, everything is $17,207, and then below that, I listed what they were last year. So they're right in line with what they were last year, even with the 3% increase in the property values. And then, right below that, is the dividends that you've received in the last few years. So you're doing really good, and you're in line to receive another nice one again, you know, for next year, so. And then after that, there are the list of the, like, the property schedule, the equipment schedule, and the auto schedule, which I've gone over with Helen, and I think you were there at this time too, Henry, so we've gone over, they should be pretty current.
There is one correction that you need, though, on page six.
Okay.
Almost halfway down, the Argo is gone, so that needs to be removed.
Number nine?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Charlie, anything else?
Does that include the trailer that goes with the Argo? That amount there?
I could not find the trailer listed.
Okay.
I don't see a trailer on that. Does one need to be added, or?
Deleted.
Deleted, okay, okay, I don't see one there. It must have been included, does that price there seem like that would include the trailer with it?
No.
Okay. No, I don't see a trailer there. This is what we went over, like, in November, I think. I got the two other bids again this year, and, as you can see, the MRN Trust is the best one by about $5,000 or so. They're a good program, and we haven't had any problems with them in the past as far as paying claims or anything, so I do recommend them, again, for the upcoming year.
Is that all you have, Tom?
That's it.
You're in pretty good shape again.
Okay.
What is the wish of the board, accepting MRI, I don't know where M is the, I think that's the lowest bid in there, her recommendation, for that number is $17,207.
Are you making that motion?
I will.
I'll second it.
Motion made with the second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye, ayes have it, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I need the visitor's list.
Recognition of visitors.
Roxanne?
No.
Linda Gals?
No.
Mr. Gals?
Not at this time.
Mr. Peters?
Not at this time.
Craig?
Very quickly. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Two, two minor items, I believe. The first is, do you know, was any testing done on the traffic signal for the preemption? I would assume that would have been part of the testing. Reason I ask is because...
Probably no more.
I heard no mention of that when I talked about the testing period.
I mean, the apparatus is there, I tried it twice when there wasn't any traffic with, just to make sure it was working before we came through an emergency situation, and it doesn't seem to be. So I don't know if our device is, is not functioning properly. The one day, it was snowing, so I don't know, that may have affected, because it's a light, if that may have affected it or not, but I just wanted, I know you're looking at a contract for that service coming up, so I just want to make sure that that's something that's functioning properly out the door, it's not turned on or whatever, but I did try it from both coming out of Business Campus Way and coming down the hill, and then Dad and I actually come back from a call the other morning, tried it from up the hill, so it hasn't worked, in my experience yet, so before it's an emergency situation.
Does it work in other segments?
Yes, definitely.
Call Penone?
So I don't know if that's something that can be calibrated or adjusted, I'm not sure.
Cambered or beaded or pegged on.
We'll call either Penn Dot or the consultant.
Very good. If there's anything you need from us, you know, I don't know, are the police cars equipped with the preemption opti-con?
No, I don't know.
If you need our vehicles to test, it's our liability as well.
All right.
The upcoming year, we are looking forward to some more growth with the non-emergency service. Ultimately, our goal is to not be as dependent upon the vehicle contributions, although limited, for, for our operations. We're trying to expand so, you know, it's not that we're coming back and begging every year for taxpayer funds, we do appreciate the ongoing support. I'm hoping that this being the last meeting of the calendar year, that that budgeted contribution for last month, with Henry's absence of the meeting, can be considered and hopefully approved. As always, should there be anything you need from us on EMS behalf, please don't hesitate to contact me. If there's anything from citizens that they have for us, we'd be happy to answer anything and provide any information that's being sought. On another behalf, not anywhere, any uniform tonight at all, I'm coming in as a council member from the borough, and I just wanted to express that I look forward to working with the supervisor from Staffordshire and Pen Township, I think it's critical that the borough and the township have a good working relationship, because I think it's kind of tough for one to exist very well without the other, so I look forward to that working relationship to continue. Thank you, I have you.
Thank you, Greg.
Luke?
No.
Almost gone. Stanley?
Yeah, I have a few of them. The Argo was brought up, how much did you get for it, and who bought it?
$6,100, and Ralph Flick. Ralph Flick.
Okay, thanks. He had an unfortunate fire out back here, Duncan yesterday, I know they had a problem getting water. There are fire hydrants back in Business Campus. Does anybody know why we're not pouring water from those hydrants? I mean, you have that big standpipe over there, it's all for fire protection.
I'm not sure, but I think that was only for Business Campus fire protection. I don't know.
I think that's in there, Stanley, if I recall, there was a big, big, big issue about that, because once they tap all of that, then they can't use that water, because they didn't put, they didn't separate those lines, they didn't have a fire line and a domestic line both. They tap out of that, the way that was, don't hold me to this, but I was really involved with that back when that was taking place with trying to get that water up there, when they were thinking about bringing water up from the borough line up over the hill. I believe that it's not a two-line system, it's all on the same, the potable and the fire lines both, and once they tap into the one, if I remember right, then they have to issue a tube oil or whatever, something, I'll check on that one more time for you, but I...
If you would, Henry. I just know that...
And I think that that was strictly for the Business Campus, if I recall, I have to look in that contract and all that paperwork.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I know the water for drinking is in a separate building, that's in tanks that are in the building, and the standpipe was for fire protection, sprinkler systems and fire hydrants, so. I didn't know, I just, you hear this on the scanner, and it's like, oh my God, can't get water, and whoever there stands, what is it, 50,000 gallons or whatever it is, just a shame that you can't tap into that.
I'll check on that.
Okay, and last question, is the emergency management coordinator, you said we do have one?
Nope, we're going to point one tonight.
Okay, 'cause I know in a meeting a few months back, you still had one.
Well, yeah, one, one's out of it.
Okay.
Okay?
The reason I'm asking is, I was reading in the record about all the courses that needed to be taken, and I didn't know if our guy had taken those courses or not.
Yes, qualified, done some legwork and that, we haven't had anybody offered to do that, there's never been a name mentioned or whatnot, so one hunting. Tonight, we'll, we will point one here.
Okay, 'cause I, like, read the article in the record, seems like a lot of stuff needed done to certify that person.
Okay. I think he has all the NIMs training that he needs. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Fickle?
I'd like to back the one I asked last month, if I may, on the conditional use hearing for Morrison and Higbert. It was asked in August, where we stood on that, and we were told that still tied up reports, but yet, with the letter, apparently, the court ruled in favor of those, in the line. So I was just wondering if anybody had any input.
Okay. I met with Richard Wagner Thursday afternoon regards to this particular matter, okay? The hearing that were held, and those conditional use hearings on there, and then the report that went back, there was appeal filed on that. The conditional uses were approved because of a glitch within his inner office that it wasn't advertised properly in the proper amount of time.
So it's still ongoing?
No, not until I talk to him, see whether we have an offer of appeal. The night that we head to the, the snowstorm, when we then, that's normally accepted, I contacted Rich regarding that, but it was another issue that created that, that is an in-house off, the in-house thing that come out of this office, and that is what they want that appeal on, because it was not done within the 60 days of the timeframe from the time it was submitted.
Okay, and one other one, with the case of Chief Pittrell coming up, various alleged Solicitor said that he has entered as the attorney representative of court, that if it becomes a conflict of interest, the township could appoint a special counsel. Does that mean township will be putting any of the bill?
The special counsel, I will address that here later on also, I also might try to get some of these things ironed out since I wasn't here, I have that underneath all business, we will take care of that issue also tonight. Okay?
Lee?
I'm just going to follow up on one of Stanley's comments, you know, about the water situation, and that township can help me in any way, but the, the fire company tried to tap my dry hydrant, and last night, they were successful in getting about a tanker out, and that was about it, because of, I guess it's supposed to be back flushed every year, or every three months, is what I'm being told, had it been done well. Is that something that township can help with? I have no way of back flushing it.
No, they, they would have to do that with their equipment hooked up to that fire hydrant, that's a special adapter, nothing that we have, nothing that we have, Lee.
Yeah, we have a ton of water sitting there, and they couldn't get it fixed. That's all I have.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's it?
That's it, I miss somebody.
Nobody else?
I thought my name was put on by somebody else, but I got nothing to say.
Okay. Okay. That's all the recognition of visitors, invoices and expenditures.
You have them before you?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing really unusual, we have two payrolls, three payroll taxes coming out. Pretty much regular bills. The only one we have not received was the one from Sylvester Services from the fall cleanup yet.
No?
No, I'm going to have to call them and ask them.
Okay.
If I get it in early enough for the reorganizational meeting, we'll have it on the final year end.
Okay.
But yeah, I have to call, I normally have to call them.
Okay. Okay, you have before you the invoice and expenditures for approval, what is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion, the orders be drawn, the bills be paid.
Okay, I'll second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Judges' report.
We're better than we were last year. I'm going to, well, Libby's going to be transferring some money from Orstown over to Pliggett, and we are expecting at least the EIT coming in at the beginning, first week or two of January. We just don't know what that number is yet. We have a CD due for the parking rec.
Let's get the treasurer's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's it.
Do I hear a motion to accept the treasurer report subject of?
I'll soon move.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Now we have a CD.
Okay, now the CD.
This is maturing on January 22nd. Marysville's at .3, so is Landisburg, and Mifflin Town is .2. Members first will not take anything less than $10,000 for a CD. It's currently at Marysville, at 2, .2 right now, so I recommend Marysville.
Make a motion, we leave it at Marysville for the increase in the interest at .3, for a 12-month period.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with the second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Want to talk about the new seats?
For the new traffic light, we now have a new bill with PP&amp;L, and the other PP&amp;L bills are currently being paid by ACH rather than check, and we'd like permission to set this one up to be paid by ACH also.
Will this be a separate bill, a separate billing from the other?
Yes, it's a separate account.
Make a motion that the traffic signal bill for PP&amp;L be paid by ACH.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with the second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
And that's all we have under the treasurer's.
Okay, you have before you the minutes for October the 30th, 2013, November the 12th, 2013, and November the 27th, 2013. What is the wish of the board for approval? Brian, you have some reviews?
Yeah, I would, I'd move that the minutes for October 30th and November 12th be approved, subject to minor typographical changes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with the second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. November the 27th meeting.
I gave some changes to Helen this evening, so I'll make the motion that the November 27th minutes be approved, subject to the corrections given to Helen this evening.
I also have some corrections to give. If you don't include those corrections in your motion, I'll second it.
Long with Brian's questions.
Okay. Motion made with the second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Highway report. Well, we survived two snowstorms and ice storms, the highway department out here, and one surprised one this morning, which we got on as quick as we could, and my biggest problem was, was I just, I had a tough time getting in, couldn't get around the point of the mountain, I just couldn't believe it, but nevertheless, we got out just as quick as we could, got some cinders on, got the roads bared up real quick, and we done the best we could with that. We've been a little slow in the activity, so everybody knows, and this month, and that's due to the employees that worked hard all summer, and they took their vacation time, which is much needed, so they didn't lose it at the end of the year, during hunting season, and over the holidays, so, but they've been backed, and they're out at the present time. We filled our Anna Skid bin twice and kept it full, and we only had a little bit of repair, replaced one snowplow blade. I hope they have the bid proposed ready for paving for air smarter drive by January meeting, so that we can get that out early, and hope the contractors are hungry for work. It's when you get your best price. I attended a meeting with Mark Keller, and he gave a good talk on the transportation bill that was out, was very interesting and informative, and, and he, he's like, like so many people, he took a lot of criticism on passing it, but he voted for it, and he gave his reasons why. One of the things that was interesting in it is the liquid fuels monies that we received from the township now will double. So if we get $105,000, we're looking at getting another $105,000 here when this thing goes into effect. Have a big effect on, on the general fund in the township, because now you can use a portion of that for the purchase of new vehicles, and that will help the, there'll be an awful lot of things you could do, and still get a mile good road paved a year. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that's going to go. There's an awful lot, I hope it moves this up on the list out here with the bridge.
Nice.
There's a lot of funding coming this way, and it was, first, everybody, it was the, the high gas tax, but there's false sense coming off. I'm surprised that that did show up in the paper later on, and there was a good explanation for that. The other thing I wanted to comment on was, I did get an invitation with Mr. Barletta, was through the area, which I took him up on the invitation, so the, we didn't not show an interest. It was interesting to hear what he had to say in regards to our government policies that he wasn't in favor of, and worst than, and et cetera. He was very informative, very well spoken, and offered any help that he could to the local municipalities, the small municipalities, that were not to be afraid to not call, and express our, our concerns, and ask for help, you know, in regards to that. So I found it interesting, and I thank those who extended the invitation to Pen Township that I got an opportunity to sit down with them. I did have a discussion with Stanley out here about the turning lane on the one snowstorm, and of course, that falls in the line, I saw that the Penn Dot didn't plow them, and et cetera, creates a little bit of a problem out there, but I will tell you, the directions to the road crew at the, at the present time, Stanley, are this. When we wrap up our plowing and whatnot, and we're done out there at the end of it, when the storm comes at the end, when we come in this way, if that is not plowed, we'll drop our plows, and we'll take care of it for you.
Did you get a hold of Penn Dot at all?
No, I didn't, I thought you said you were going to call, but, okay.
With all the days I have in the time.
But I, I will say something to them, I haven't seen them, if you didn't, I mean, I, I mentioned that...
Did you know I asked for it, then?
I don't know who's...
Plowing, I'm not sure.
I don't know, but I can make that call for you if you will.
Yeah, yeah, I just...
They didn't, they didn't plow the center turning lane, they didn't, they didn't touch none of it, you know, and, and we need at least mention it to them out there, but that one coming down the hill to get them off the road, to get into your place there, that was clear out on the way.
Yeah, that was a dangerous one.
And that was a dangerous one there, you know what I'm saying? So I, they, the road crew has their, have been told to take care of that when they come in this way, if it's not plowed for you.
So I don't mind doing it, I'm just, that new light, it's safe to be the...
I, I tell you, it's difficult with the plowing, made the plowing difficult.
Yeah, it did.
It did.
I used to enjoy that plowing, man, it was like...
Yeah, but not now.
Now, I'm afraid, yeah.
I saw a big difference out there, it just, worried about getting hit for the first time, and before I wasn't.
Exactly.
I had a couple questions on what was our plow schedule, and I'm going to take the time here and make it real quick. So everybody knows that we have three drivers out, Ken Mullin, Tom Rissinger, and myself, and I take one of the big trucks, Ken takes the other big truck, Tom's in the small 550. Tom's first line is load the truck, his first stop is Purdy's, goes down Woodland and takes care of those down there and catches that coming out. From there, he goes up behind the Purdy's Chapel and gets those steep hills. They need it quick, and on there up front, when the snowstorm's like, we're trying to get preemptive on it, get some on it before we get snow on them anymore, it's a big help, because then you can plow it off. Tom goes to Purdy's first, goes down there, comes up, catches Burley, comes back up the road, catches that nasty one up around hill there that's really treacherous for the big truck, and comes to lower end of Duncan Sunshine Hills and takes care of this up here. Tom leaves there first. I pull out with the truck, first stop Stanley's. I go right up the red light, cinder in, cinder out, and, and clear back to the end, come out, and make sure that the accesses are in there and cinder it and plow. From there, I head to King Cora. Not only is King Cora got the nursing home, but there's two school buses back here in the development that need out. School bus is on Susquehanna Hills. From King Cora, I go to Susquehanna Hill, make sure that that is bared, and not that the buses get up and down, the people can get up and down that, that's the two worst places that I have. Make my return trip back and get the hill there at the Cove Church, and then from there, we take care of the rest of the Cove, schoolhouse, and et cetera. Ken immediately goes out to Gambers and goes down around that way, catches Creek Road, and goes out and gets the hills on both sides of King's Mills Bridge there, passes on the other side with cinders, and try to get that covered right away. So we do the best we can, we got 30 miles of road, and it takes some time to get around to get it done, but the, I've had calls from the base at 4:00 in the morning, and we're already out. And so, this morning though, at 4:30, there was nothing. I got a call from, Tom said, "You look out your window." I said, "Not yet, I'm getting ready to go." He said, "Turn the lights on, look outside," and we really had a mess. That's all I have on that, on the, on the road crew, we're looking forward to getting some warm weather, we got our equipment in pretty good shape, things are working well, and we try to get out there as soon as possible and keep the roads bare. That's all I have underneath the highway report. Pen Township Planning Commission.
Okay, the first thing you have are the Planning Commission's response to the comprehensive plan public hearing. They are asking permission to do a mailing, a newsletter-type mailing in January, to send these out. Best part is, we don't have to sell them out to a printer, we could actually do them in-house, just have to get the paper.
Okay. I make a motion that we concur with their request, Helen, that they be given permission to respond to those answers via letter.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion made with the second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Warden Properties letter.
Okay, we received a letter from Mr. Robb's attorney regarding the Warden property. He is asking five questions again, same questions he asked at the beginning of the year. The Planning Commission is asking you to review and comment if desired, or have Rich comment, or whatever. I copied you with the letter that Rich had me send out back in March, the waiver request for the call to Saks, and the original letter that he mentions in his letter, so.
Helen, due to the nature of the request, it's like the same questions they submitted before, they are questions on the legal side, you know? I would offer one more time, we forward the same thing back to Rich for his response to come back and, and do it in, in that proper manner.
All right.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. We have the zoning report next.
You have it in front of you, there's nothing-
Nothing there, okay. Storage Enforcement Officer report also.
Oh, he just gave Bill his holding tank permit.
Yes, I was back. Wanted to put that holding tank in, got a very nice functional facility there now on the outside for anybody to come to visit back at the winery. I was back plowing snow, and he said, "You need to come back, I want you to take a look at it." I didn't have nothing in, but I went back, took a look at it, got a real nice job.
That's good.
And so, we thank him for getting rid of the porta potty, getting rid of a lot of his problems. Okay, zoning report, Storage Enforcement Officer report, Penn Township Park and Rec Board report.
You have my report, I just wanted to thank you and the road crew for helping us get things ready and sealed up for the winter. We do have a scheduled date for our annual barbecue, it's March twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, and that's it.
Done. Penn Township Municipal Authority Water Connection Orders.
Dennis has drafted this and given it to us. If you wish, it needs to be advertised for adoption.
Okay. Helen and Lou, Rich not being here last month, and not again here this month, okay? Their solicitor drew this up, I took a look at it, I feel it's probably good and proper, but I would make a motion that you be given the opportunity to advertise it for adoption, subject to any changes or anything that Rich Wagner may see to change within it for it to stop that adoption.
Okay. For the December, I mean, the January twenty-ninth meeting.
Yeah, January twenty-ninth.
Okay, so I gotta get that to him.
Okay, I put that for a motion, I'll hear a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered, okay? Anything else on the Municipal Authority?
No.
Okay. Secretary's report.
Okay, the Morrison Letter of Credit request was tabled last month. What you wish.
Concerned with anybody on the board in regards to Morrison's letter of credit, whether to release it?
Release it, reduce it, keep it as it is.
I do still have some concerns with that, for some unfinished business with that. Don't mean to belabor the point, but I feel that it needs to be tabled until we get some resolution.
Okay, I hear a motion to table till we get some resolution, some of the problems still pending with that. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, the B is the Holding Tank Porta John, ordinance. This is, if you wish, advertised for adoption. The changes to it are on page four, adding language for the porta johns, and there's also a new form to fill out for porta johns only.
Trying to get away from your problem you had, Lee. What is the wish of the Board in regards to the holding tank amendment? On the porta johns.
Have we received any comments from Rich on this?
No. If you wish to table, I'll make a motion to table until it's thoroughly reviewed with him with the change of the wording.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Pension ordinance.
This has been advertised for adoption, if you wish to adopt it. C.C. and Brian talked with Rich on the phone last month concerning it.
Okay. And?
He was all right with that, especially because it had come from a representative from P-Sats.
Basically, we eliminated one section and amended section six, years of service and how that works.
Now, this was the ordinance in referencing to the police department, correct?
The police pension plan, yes.
Okay, Rich is okay with it?
I believe, to the best of my knowledge.
They talked to him.
Yeah.
He referenced that it basically came from P-Sats as a relatively standard wording.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt?
Advertised.
Advertised.
No, 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 it's been advertised.
It's been advertised.
You guys authorized to advertise last month.
Okay.
So, it's adoption, if you wish.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt that resolution, or that ordinance, I'm sorry.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay.
Traffic light maintenance contract, good for you.
First off, we did receive notice of our thirty-day test period, starting December eleventh. You have three quotes, I'm sorry, four quotes. Signal Service gave two versions. I don't know, you haven't had time to look at it, C.C., I don't believe. One is with what they call relamping, fixing the LED lights and checking them and all that, and one's without. With Signal Service, the first year would be no cost for a contract, the second year would be one of the two prices, depending on which one you would choose. Your question about ATS, he did not elaborate, he said what was in his letter, it was prices.
And it was very big.
Yes, and he sent me the same letter, again. And then you have C.M. High Incorporated, and they did list their prices, and you had perks from last month. So, we have thirty days before we have to have this in place. And that's by the Penn dot H O P.
Took a look at those today, you have till the, that could be done on-
I believe it could be done on the sixth.
On the sixth, unless you would have sat here and reviewed them right now.
Because December eleventh, and that'd be December, January tenth would be thirty days.
The one shows a higher cost, but in the long run, if you take a look at it, compare them with the other one, it is less money.
I believe so.
I believe so, I mean, for what they've offered. The first two years of it is what makes it cost effective.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. So, that's with Signal, but you can take a look at the comparison. One of them didn't have a breakdown detailed enough to suit us.
Yes, that was ATS.
Suit me anyhow. And if you wanna pass or make a decision now, or wait till-
Reorganization.
Yes, give the opportunity to look at those that they come in.
Did that Signal Service, did they list the equipment?
Yes, they list equipment, and not only that, but they also list the individual services under each section, and also the response times. For the two different, you really wanna look on page five under the, what's that called? That's six. Signal heads, that's the main, that's the difference between the two different contracts for Signal. And it's basically checking the LED lights, and the linemen and all that, everything that goes with that.
You seem pretty thorough.
Yeah, I was surprised to get that one, I didn't expect to get it.
But they showed that they're out of Westchester, do they have a more local office?
They did not say that, no, but they do have a couple other places around here that they do service. Oh, those are the technical supports, come on, that's off. There's one, I think it's Hampton Township, I'd have to double check with them on where they, I thought it said in here, maybe not. They have a couple of them in Cumberland County that they service. And being in Westchester, the four-hour response times makes sense. Signal came in on Tuesday around eleven o'clock, that's why you didn't get it until tonight.
Thank you, man, the late notice, I got the opportunity to look down today, so I'm-
Yeah.
Calling for the wish of the Board to either make a motion or else table for further review for adoption to take place of it, or for the contract to be awarded at the sixth meeting. What's the pleasure of the Board, do I hear a second to that motion, or do we wanna make a decision now?
I'm not sure where Brian is out there.
Well, it seems to me that for the additional money, we oughta go with the, for the hire, because we have more items covered when they do their inspection.
And no fees up front.
No fees on the front. If something happens to it, we'll have to pay whatever the cost is in their schedule.
Which would otherwise.
Yes.
But because it's new, they're not gonna charge us a fee up front like the other.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, do you feel comfortable with making any decision?
I'll make the motion that we go with the proposal that has a second year cost of five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. That's Signal, yeah.
Yeah, with Signal Service Incorporated.
Version one of Signal.
I'm not sure where you're seeing your version.
Second line, yeah.
It's my, my cover sheet.
It's over here. I got two of my cover sheets.
It's there, trust me.
Signal Service, version-
Yeah, the one that contains the relamping.
Version one.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, the next thing I have is, I missed a C on that, Duncan Fire Company, letter of credit.
Okay. I had met with Max out there one day, we took a review of that, took a look at everything that was out there, also went out with Steve, we set the transit up and shot the inverted pipe over there according to the head wall, the damage, there was some confusion on that. Meet your requirements, everything that they've got in there was according to that second design done by Mr. Madden, so therefore, I'll make a motion with Max's consent, I think you're okay with it, Max?
I would agree that everything is complete, Max was required.
I'll make a motion that we reduce their letter of credit totally.
Release the-
Release it, yes, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, the last, next thing I have is Barbara Hamilton asked if we were going to do the twenty-four, buy the twenty-fourteen census from the school district and do that again. And if we do, would she be paid for doing the comparison?
And that was well worth it last year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be as high as number as this, next year, but there'll still be probably some changes. So, is that a yes or no, or what?
Make a motion if that's a yes.
Motion's been made, I'll second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, and would we pay Barbara to do it, or would we do it in-house again?
I'd say we-
It don't matter to me.
I'd say we continue with continuity what we did last year.
All right.
That's only a suggestion, okay?
Okay. And the very last thing is just for information, the items from cap tax meeting on the eighteenth, the budget and all that, they are actually in the black this year. They've been in the red for the last couple of years, but they are gonna, they are expecting to be in the black, not a whole lot in the black, but in the black. And a lot of it is to do with, with Act thirty-four, they had to release or retire, more retired, some personnel, so the payroll, they closed the office in Carlisle, and rearranging cheaper places for rent, so that's helped a lot, and they're getting more back taxes in. And that's all I have, under mine.
Okay, Engineers' Report.
Okay, you should have a copy of my report. In addition to working with the Planning Commission on their contest of paying responses, as mentioned earlier, we was out and looked at the Duncan Fire Company facility for reduction of security, and also, at the same time, went up in Cove Grove, and looked at some drainage issues with Henry, had some discussion and talked to him about some things to do up there for those. Those are the items I have.
Okay, on the issue that we look back in the code, Max, I will contact that individual back there for discussion on that, if she has any other questions, by golly, I'll give her your number and refer to you. That's a difficult one to correct, you're gonna have to have some cooperation from the neighbors on those sides.
Yeah, you will, yeah.
Okay? Okay, now, thank you for that report. Next, you have the Police Report.
Heather, it worked for you, we collected a total of well over five thousand dollars in fines and costs from the court systems in November, which brought a total a year to date of sixty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. We'll have, I guess, one more month yet of fines and costs from them before we total out for the year. We have, barring anything in the next five days, our budget came in under in excess of five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents, which we'll probably wanna move to the Capital Reserve or Vehicle Fund, barring anything in the next round of five days coming up.
Anything else, Chuck?
Yep.
Okay, we have the Solicitors' Report. Like I said, I finally got together and got to meet with Rich in regards to some of these issues, and some of those questions come up. And one of the issues, you know, seems there's so much interest here in the issue with Chief Pickles out here, and Rich suggested it is to make a motion to appoint an independent counsel if needed, if needed. Therefore, there'll be no cost at the present time, name that person. And I would like to make a motion that an independent counsel be notified and appointed for need be. for need be, if the need arises, and we contact Scott Kramer for that appointment. Put that form of motion.
I second the motion.
Motion been made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so order. Okay, permit reports before you.
Nothing major, we had a couple houses come in in November, and that's about it.
Okay. Okay, correspondence, peace obstacle convention.
Okay, this is not to make a decision tonight, this is to look at, to see if you wish to attend. They also have a spring forum for emergency management on April 13th, if that's going to be needed, or wanted. Just need to know at the reorganizational meeting, and the convention is April 13th through 16th.
Okay. Anything else?
Mm-hmm.
Old business?
I don't have any.
Under old business, I have listed here for the EMS donation, and over a period of a year, there's an awful lot of things that gets forward to my face and to my ears, and unfortunately I have to deal with them, or at least take them to heart and try to resolve some of the problems that may be out there or may not be out there. And today Greg was kind enough to meet with me for a while, and we had some discussion on some certain matters, but I needed to let him know, so that what he might be hearing and what I was saying, or what I'm thinking, is two different things. It was amiable, it was friendly, it still is, and I would like to make a motion that we release the donation free EMS that was promised to them to the amount said last year at the reorganization meeting.
Okay. Check cut next week, or wait until the, well, cut the check before the 31st, so it's in this year.
That'll be within this year, by that way, yes.
Do you want it signed by then, or you want to wait until the 6th? Well, I can cut the check and do all the paperwork, so it's in this year. But do you, I'm asking if you guys want to come in next week and sign it, or do you want to wait?
I'll be here to sign it, I'm sure Brian will, okay?
Okay.
I can't speak for him, but that fine with everyone?
Okay.
And I will second your motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so order. Okay. Old business, one other thing I have underneath there, the appointment for civil defense director. That's something that I put a lot of effort into, whether people believe it or not, trying to find someone, trying to get someone to step forward. Paul sold us, didn't want it, but yet he said he would fill in and stay there by golly as long as we needed him, he wouldn't let us down. I went up, I talked to Tom Bell, up in New Bloomfield, I got his okay, I run this by Solicitor Wagner, and the individual has all the NIMs training, and is, I think will serve, get someone on board, and they already go to a lot of the emergency management's meetings, they're involved, and et cetera. It's been done in other areas, I found out, much to my surprise, that township managers, police officers, and some of them hold two, three duties, including civil defense director. At that, I make a motion, the person that we have available, has the NIMs training, that at the present time, when I talk to him, he has all the information, and that we appoint Chief Pickles as the civil defense director for the time being. We have somebody on board, we have paperwork here laying from the county that wants names, wants someone there, needs somebody there. And so, we'd have to go as long as we possibly could, the need to be done. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. What's that? It's, and then I found out, I think Mr. Bell served in that same position when he was a police officer, he told me. And so, there's some advantages to it, I believe, and you have someone that we can throw out that form, get that name into them, and get them on board. Wouldn't want to get caught without it. Paul, talked to Paul, and Paul was not willing to continue, but he did serve right to the very end, okay? I have one other thing under old business, reading through the minutes, and I wasn't here last night, and of course, you know, I'm always quick to defend myself, and I will defend myself on the pictures and the accusations that were made last night. Take a look at those pictures there, I will tell you that when I bought the farm in 1993, there was approximately 45, 50 automobiles sitting on that farm. I immediately come into township and said I will remove them, they're up against a place where Mr. Gerner now lives, must have been 10, 15 of them up in there. I moved them away from the people's property and started hauling them out of there. Plus a lot of other stuff that was there that was left when I purchased the farm. In the process of that, shortly after I come in, said I clean them up. This township so decided to send me a letter and four other people, and used me because I volunteered to make other people clean up. And when I found out they did it, I stopped, and I challenged one, because I didn't need to move anything, not by your ordinance, not by anything else. The Right to Farm Act, by golly, makes you exempt from that. Well, I volunteered to take them out of there, and I didn't want them, and I did move them away from them, and one of them, it might surprise you, I wished I hadn't jumped and trashed, because Stanley called me and asked me, and he'd like to have it. And Stanley, I wish you had that old Dodge panel truck that said "Bots of Balls Meats" on the side of it, because it was very much restorable, and I trashed that thing. Now, if you'd have said something, I'd have been glad to give it to you to get it out. So the other items that are sitting down there, the tires and et cetera, that we say they're dumped there, those tires were not dumped there, off of all those cars that I jumped and trashed, I took those tires off. They are still sitting there to be conveyed up at my cost to Montango up here to be destroyed. That's where they're going. They will be hauled out of there. I'm a busy person, the old Chevy truck that you see in the picture sitting here, that says there, that's sitting there, that was one sitting in there, I get down to Hershey Auto Show, took pictures of that, plus a lot of other automobiles down there, a lot of this old stuff is 30 or 40 stuff. I stripped all the chrome, all the headlights, all the taillights, all the emblems off of them, and took them down there and sold them, to get as much out of them as I possibly could. So that stuff is there, it's nothing that I wanted, but it's something that I've been working on to get out. That truck, a guy agreed to buy, and I drug it up there. He came, got some parts off of it, and left the rest of it set. It was one piece that I could not pick up and put on my flatbed there with my backhoe, the hallway, if you take a look in that picture of that truck, you'll see the gasoline bottle's still there, the oxygen bottle's still there, where I was going to cut the frame in two so I could pick it up with two pieces, or I can let it sit there forever. I choose not to do that. You take a look at that, it says junk truck, 8,000, 10,000 gallon fuel tank, sure, there's 8,000, 10,000 gallon fuel tank there. How many of them would you like me to show you in the cove, where farmers have bought them, cut them in two, and slid them up, and they are now present and using for their grain bins? Same thing I purchased the tank for, to do the same. I can take you back there and show the other farms where they are in use, that's why that tank's there, no other reason. And that tank's sitting there, of course, heavy snowstorm came and took the barn down. Got another in here, says it's a junk, it's a 101 John Deere corn planer. Fits the old two cylinder John Deere tractors, it's an antique, and it's worth a couple bucks. Says junk, junk to you, but maybe not to me. When the price is right, I'll get rid of it. Another picture there, says those, those expansion tanks sitting there. Yes, I brought those expansion tanks in there, one of them's out here, houses our E3 oil. I fixed that up to meet the requirements of DEP, we get our E3 oil in out here, and we get it at a good price that way, and we don't need to be running over to anywhere just to get it in a car buggy at a time, we can fill it up. Those tanks sitting there also, one of them will be used for an air tank, and when I find property otherwise sitting in there, since I was in the plumbing business, there's also, and I made, when zoning came in, everybody knowing what I've done there, there was cast iron radiators in there, people come in, they want a cast iron radiator, I sell them one. Nobody can see them there, but they're there, and a lot of them, and hard to get their hands on today, the old radiant cast iron. They take a look at that, and they say junk, if you take a look at that one there, it says junk behind the Quonset hut, I have a car sitting in there, a Lincoln, and if you take a look at that, that's the top of my farm wagon sticking up down there, and if you take a look at it, I got some lumber laying on it, it's the same wagon that I use to bring railbales in. But we assume, and we say that's junk. You have junk here in another picture there, it's my water hydrant coming out of the ground in my yard with a garden hose attached to it, but yet it has an arrow pointed to it that's junk. Everything that's sitting on there, I can either get rid of, keep, or let it sit there. I choose to get rid of most of it. I get rid of some of it as the need permits, someone wants to buy it. Down there on my farm, when I was in the piping business, yes, I have pipe there, I give pipe to the borough, I've given enough pipe or weight to people down there that come in, it's like a community chest, and I don't charge them nothing for it. Anybody that wants what they could have got to use, I help them out, because I really have no use for it, but rather than see it get thrown away, it's went to good use, it's served this community well for an awful lot of people that got stuff. So you can take issues with that, and then the minute say that there's leaking of oil in, or freeze air in vehicles, I'd challenge anybody, it'd have to be redim the loan to find out, I hope. But if anyone has any more questions about it, I'm willing to talk about it right now. I will tell you that when the estate was settled and I bought the farm, it was right in the estate settlement, and I got nothing but the junk. That letter is over here in file, was given to the township immediately in 1993 when I bought the farm. Fifty years or more of gathering up, none of this stuff is anything that was my mother and dad's. I didn't buy it, I didn't put it there, neither did they, but when I purchased the farm, I ended up with it. And so I'm doing the best to get rid of it as I can. I holed a tremendous amount of stuff out of there last year. Believe me, I don't want it there. I could have left it all set up there right in Mr. Gerner's yard, and nobody could ever done a thing about it. If you take a look at that, folks, if you take a look, how many vehicles did you drive in here tonight in Penn Township that you drove by, that don't have inspection sticker on it, that are illegal, shouldn't be sitting there and whatnot? Astronomical thing, by golly, take a look at in Penn Township, or any other municipality. There's ordinances out there, when you get an official complaint, and it applies out there, hey, you got it. I don't know of a farm around sitting out there that doesn't have some of that stuff. I try not to, and I've worked hard at getting it cleaned up, and I will continue. Any questions?
Yeah, those pictures, or a comment prompted those pictures, so the comment that was made was about a dump, you know what I mean, accusing my property of a dump.
Not by me.
You know what I mean, and I was just giving an example.
Not by me.
Is every one of those recyclable products out there that I got? All natural.
Does that include...
Every guy comes in here, law is recyclable.
Yes, it is.
Why do they come in at night, and as soon as they hit that landing pad?
Nobody's supposed to be in there at night. We're putting up a gate, they actually stop.
They are at night, as soon as they hit your driveway, the lights go out. It must be the magnetic pull on the headlights.
Yeah, it must be.
I mean, I'm telling you.
Listen, shut up for a minute, you want to get a license number? I will be happy to turn it over to him.
Excuse me, I'll take issue with saying shut up to another resident, you know...
We're both taxpayers.
Right, and let's have a little respect.
But I'm actually trying to say, I would gladly give that license plate to him, because nobody's supposed to be in there.
Okay, immaterial, we're on a different subject, I responded, I responded to these, and I felt it was unfair, and I responded to it, and I responded to you in a truthful manner. Given it to you, straight, no lies, no crap, that's how I got that stuff, okay? That's my problem, do I want it there, I'm taking care of it. I can either leave it, or I can let it sit there, or I can get rid of it. But I choose to try to get the value out of it, because I worked long and hard, by golly, didn't whether I was going to be able to keep that placement about it.
And please understand, I'm not trying to...
So your personal issues with someone else, you need to take them outside, don't throw them at me.
I'm just giving an example, but the day after the township meeting, I got the letter from the county, and I'm sure you got a copy of it too, that everything is okay. That was the day after the meeting I got it.
No copy. Can we follow up on that, Helen?
Mm-hmm.
Get ahold of Ken.
I don't know what Sam's sure of coming in there, but all gals can tell you the same.
Tom, please, you know, you know, I, I address this, by golly, in defense of my position, where I'm at in the township, and a lot of other people, they're in the same boat. I don't like to see people unjustly accused, I'll tell you that, and this, totally out of line, if you've done this, then just a comment.
An uncounded comment, I would add.
So, I wanted to defend myself in that, and bring that up here, so everybody knows, there's nothing to hide in my part, not at all. Okay, Helen, I would ask you to take a look at, see if you copy the letter, yes, and that issue there...
I'll call on him tomorrow.
These things come before the board, unfortunately, I'm the one, past the daddy burst of them, and I do the best of it I can, try to keep it a little patient, very cool. You get involved, you get a lot of complaints, and if you don't take a look at them, well, you're in a tough place, and if you do take a look at them, you're usually end up in a tough place. And the letter sent from Lenny Sizer in regards to this, you know, I heard the conversation and the argument one night, business. This termination on that is any enterprise, occupation, trade or profession engaged in either continuously or temporarily for profit. The term business shall include the occupancy or use of a building or premises, or any person thereof for the transactional business, or the rendering or receiving of professional or personal service. Now, all I tried to do was to settle the issue that the argument was in here, whether we are running a business or they aren't running a business, and the phone number is a cell phone, that it's not there, that, all this and that. Those arguments can come across on the floor, and unless you get rid of some of that rigidness and confrontationist, by golly, you, it is hard to resolve anything. When you're rigid and confrontatious, in all phrases, by golly, whether it's one party or two parties, I've been there, and sometimes you have to be. But I just wanted to let you know, that was Glennie's interpretation, back to the township when asked how it applies to our zoning, that was his definition of it, not like that made for a matter of the record, Helen.
Just toss.
Okay. Old business, and Stanley, once again, I'm sorry, I couldn't give you that truck. They would have been a bit of a hell. New business, nothing else under old business is budget.
Yep.
You have the budget before you for adoption.
I gave you the new sheet.
Been duly advertised?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the budget for 2014.
Okay, motion's been made.
I second the motion.
Second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, budget's... Ayes have it, budget is adopted as presented. And the board adjourned. Whether I make friends over it or not, I'd like to thank Cece for the six years that she served in the township. Many things that she's done and I've done have been highly controversial. She has right to her opinion, just as everybody else will sits in this board, and it's not an easy position, let me tell you. It gets rough at times. But you do the best you can to see that everybody gets treated fair, and that's my main concern. I would like to offer that in this board here, I have discussed many a times with Solicitor Wagner, is how much I let the residents say. I've been to other councils, other places, you get three minutes, you get a chance to speak once, and you're given nothing else. I choose, as chairman here, unless the board wants to override me, to let everybody have. Instead of their speaking at, if they choose not to speak at the recognition of visitors, to listen what takes place, if they have questions at the end, I entertain that. A lot of places don't do that. But I think it's important, because there may be things that take place during the meeting that will allow and arise a question to be asked at the end of the meeting. Only trouble of it is, at the end of the meeting, the endeavor to keep order sometimes gets a little rough. And you try to do the best, you try to have, the residents have their input, and you have to, you have to find, to find some common ground. I do the best I can, if I fall short, oh, I fall short, I apologize to everybody for that. At that, I'd like to, nothing else? I'd like to make a motion for...
I have two things.
Oh, okay. Yourself.
Sorry. I would like to return the key to the outer and inner township office door. Those were given to me six years ago, well, not those, locks were changed, added. So I am returning my set of keys. Also, and I probably should have brought this up under highway report, but it was brought to my attention recently, and I don't mean to blindside you with this, Henry, but there are residents, parents, grandparents, who bring their children or grandchildren to the bus stop out of Faust Apartments, down the hill to Creek Road, and they wait under the highway there. There's, there's been concern before, and there's still concern, about the safety of the children waiting there. There are some parents or guardians or whatever that bring the children, dump them off and leave, but there are those who bring their children down and stay with them. As you know, the curve of that road, the bus stops there, there's a little bit of a bend. There's concern that people aren't always paying attention, and if, you know, there's been some close calls. And not all the children stand there quietly waiting for the bus. So, is there anything that the highway department could do? Could there be any of the bollards put under there? I don't know, I mean, you don't want to put a pen for them to wait in, but something to protect them from the traffic on Creek Road to, and if, and if they choose to play outside of it on Creek roadside, that's up to them. But where does that property fall and liability fall?
Well, the ground you're talking about, Cece's state right away, okay? Underneath that bridge there, it goes across. I was, when we replaced those bollards there where the bank was washed away on the lower side, where I dug that up, I was in with the state, involved with that. Asked the state, since they put the guardrails up originally, whether they would give us some help, or whether they give us any, any compensation for that in regards to that in there. Well, we struck out with that. They didn't come in. The only thing that I didn't strike out with them was when they had that old road across there, they had huge culvert pipes in there that they put across that stream and filled dirt over them. And over the years, that Juniada gets wild, it's washed the dirt away, and one of those big culvert pipes come down there and crossed up in there, dammed that up in there. And we had no meaning to take it out, it had been relatively expensive for us. So we'll give them, they came down with a gradol, and they reached down in there and they got that thing out, and they gave us some help with that. But they also gave me the okay to do that on the other side. I was unaware that people come down there. I received a complaint, immediately stopped all activities and sent Tom down immediately with the backhoe to plow the snow back. The road crew has their orders to make sure that they widen out there, that they can get off the car, off the road, the school district, they ask to be for that. And we've taken care of that since that, immediately, as soon as I was told. Didn't know it, did not know it existed. And so, there is a flat, open space in there underneath that bridge there, and there is now the, whoever plows that road out there, as he can, sometimes Tom takes a small truck up if he catches up and goes up in it. But at the present time, I'm making sure to the left going up to Faust's apartment and underneath the bridge, that the snow was plowed back enough in there that the people can get their cars off the side of the road so that they don't need a... What it was, they plowed the road open and rolled it back, then they couldn't get off the road to wait with their kids, which I was totally unaware it was going on. But as soon as I got the call, I sent Tom out, because the snow was plowed back, and it froze. And you could not roll it back with a snow plow blade. So I sent him out with the backhoe, and since then, we've been keeping that open. So, that was, the answer to your question was, I got a call from the school, did it not, Helen?
Yes, you did.
Well, that wasn't even my question, I didn't think about the snow.
Yeah, and it was the snow. But when the snow is the reason why it's come up, when the snow's not there, anybody can drive in there, the bus pulls in there.
Yeah, but they're, and I didn't even think about the snow issue, but they're looking for some kind of protection for the children, because from what I understand, the bus cannot go up into the apartment complex to pick the children up because it's private property, and the property owner does not want the liability of the bus being up there. And that's why they come down the hill, and that's a totally different issue. But for the safety of the children, whether it's sunny or snowy, they're looking for some kind of... And the only thing I could think of that would give them a fighting chance under there would be the bollards. You know, if someone's not paying attention coming in Creek Road, realizes there's a bus stop there and veers under there, rather than rear-ending the bus or hitting the bus head-on, you know, to keep the children safe underneath there that are waiting.
Well, once you set bollards across there, nobody drives across there, you can't get in there. I mean, I, I mean, I'd have to take a look at where you're going to put bollards to protect the kids if you want them in underneath there off the road, then where's the cars parked? Once you place the bollards, I guess, is one of the times. I'm not trying to dance around it. If it's more than a snow problem that they want, or protection for the kids out there, I'll take a look at it. But you, and then if we set a bollard up there, where's our liability, which we got to take a look at? That's why, when I set those others up there and put the guardrails in there, I made sure that everything was okay, that we relieved ourselves of the liability, and et cetera on that. And I'll take another look at it, see if there's something that could be done different. I answered the question to the school to plow the stove back so that the people could pull off in there, that they weren't setting out along the road. Of course, when you went out and took a look at it, you understood right away, but in an unreasonable request, we took care of it immediately.
Yeah, I hadn't even thought about that, and they didn't even mention snow, so...
And that's why, that's why the complaint came in, because it was piled up.
Yeah.
And so, we got off of our right away and plowed, plowed back in there so people could pull in. And that's, do the best with those things that we can, and we try to address them and take care of them. And I'll take another look at it, if there's something else that they want out there, if the, you know, if the resident got a concern, ask them to come to meetings, press their concerns, and ask what they'd like to see. Which reasonable, we'll work on it. Yes, Stanley?
Two things, Henry, you brought about Scott Kramer, an independent counsel. Who'd be paying that bill?
Well, hopefully.
I hate that answer, hopefully.
For whatever reason Rich said, "As needed," and he's told me to put that statement in there. That issue there, for whatever it may be, and believe me, I don't understand everything that takes place in regards to that, we would be the one that would be doing the hiring for him. I asked him if what he thought would be involved with it. He said he would never see more than anything that would come up with anything that would involve more than an hour's worth of time. That's, that was, that's giving it to you straight, Stanley.
And EMS amount, that was, I guess, in April, that was, whatever, what was that amount?
Well, that was, that was approved last year at the reorganization meeting.
Give me a second.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That was, it would be what was...
What was approved in January?
What was approved, yes, in January. I think that was the right amount.
Around that.
Yeah, it was right there, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Cece, now you have all this free time, and you're not going to do it anymore?
No. Yeah, were you going to give me a ticket?
Henry, 14-8-56.
14-8-56. I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered.
Boys, make sure you get down there. Which letter?